And Frank. Sorry.
Nope, you're good.
I saw him in the waiting room.
It's the Frank and Rocky Show.
Commissioner O'Donnell, you with us?
He's got his mute on.
Earth, Frank, come in Frank. This city commission meeting will have an executive session. President ORS 1826602E to conduct deliberations with persons designated by the governing party to negotiate real property transactions. And 2H to consult with council regarding concerning legal rights and duties of a public body with regard to current litigation or litigation likely to be filed. Call roll please.
Commissioner Frank O'Donnell.
Here.
Commissioner Rocky Smith.
Here.
Commissioner Rachel Lyle Smith.
Here.
Commissioner Denise McGriff.
Present.
Mayor Dan Holliday.
Here, and for the near future, we're going to dispense with the flag salute as long as we're doing these remote meetings. We'll move on to ceremonies, proclamation, and presentation 20-246. We are delaying the presentation of the Ruth McBride Powers Preservation Award until the awardees can be here in in public, hopefully sometime in late August. So with that, Ms. Turway, do you want to just make a quick announcement about who that is?
Yes, the award went to Ms. Freeman. Carrie Freeman is the owner of the CG Huntley House at 916 Washington Street.
Okay. All right, thank you, then we'll move on. Do we have any citizen comment not on the agenda? By the time it's in here, huh? Okay. Everybody okay with the agenda?
Uh, yes.
All right, I'm making, uh.
I thought you were gonna.
Yeah, I'm making a change of the agenda. We're going to move item 7A up to right now. So that's 20-258 Public Works Upper Yard Charter Park Discussion, Mr. Conkle.
Thank you, Mayor, evening commissioners. So the commission requested that staff prepare an ordinance for discussion.
Can you please, I'm sorry, can you please hold? Sorry, we had a crash in the back.
Oh, please.
A technical difficulty.
Please stand by.
Can you hear me? Yes, okay.
Okay, so we apologize for the technical difficulty. We are now back. And we are proceeding with item 7A, which is the Public Works Upper Yard Charter Park Discussion, Mr. Conkle.
Thank you, Mayor, evening commissioners. The commission requested that staff prepare an ordinance for discussion that would remove the two Adair buildings from the Public Works Upper Yard and designate the Upper Yard as a charter park. In researching the tax lot configurations and after discussion with Commissioner McGriff, it was clear that an ordinance was not a possibility with the current tax lot information that was available. To bring forward an ordinance, staff would propose to hire a consultant to prepare a partition or lot line adjustment of tax lot 500 to accurately reflect the commission's desire to dedicate the Upper Yard as a charter park. Staff has also requested direction on the disposition of a property at 521st Street and the timing of adopting the armory building tax lot as a charter park. Staff is preparing a request for a proposal to demolish the Adair buildings, which will be appropriately advertised for removal and documented prior to demolition. So on the slide that you have before you, tax lot 500 is the larger lot. It encompasses both the lower yard along South Center Street, and then the bluff comes up in the upper yard as well. So everything north of South John Adams, and then down to Waterboard Park, and then it directly abuts the armory property, which is that 204 South John Adams. The second lot in question and looking for direction on is tax lot 1700. Now, that one is located at 521st First Street. That is on the upper part of the property, so it's above the bluff. That was purchased, I believe it had a home on it when it was purchased, and then that was subsequently demolished. The one thing with this is that that property was bought with utility funds, so that if the desire of the commission is to incorporate that into the park, the recommendation would be that the utility funds are reimbursed for at a minimum the purchase price, which was just over $155,000 in 2006. The other part, if if we do move forward with either the lot line or the partition, what we would propose to do, to hire the consultant, we would need to do a survey. We would most likely probably identify the lot line, probably a foot to two foot behind the edge of the top of the cliff of the bluff that runs along there to create that new tax lot. Part of the reasoning on that is that whatever happens with the lower yard, the bottom part of that, you know, controlling access to and any mitigation or safety measures that need to be put on that bluff, we would prefer to run with the property below it, which would be the subject of any rockfall or mitigation that would have to happen to protect that lower property rather than having that rock face itself belong to another property owner or be part of a different property interest. The armory building, which is the southern piece there, just at the south end of John Adams, South John Adams, is in the process of being demolished. Once the demolition is completed, as expected, the property will revert back to the city. Staff would propose to bring forward an ordinance for consideration that would dedicate the armory tax lot as a charter park once the reversion of the property to the city is completed. As an alternative, the property could be identified through an ordinance to automatically become a charter park once the city acquired the property. On the existing Oregon City Charter, there is one triangular piece as you're going up Lynn Avenue that's identified to become a charter park if it's ever acquired by the property or by the city. It's a little bit an oddity. It's the only one of those in the charter like that where we don't own it, but it's already been identified for dedication if it's ever acquired. We do have, we are preparing a request for proposal to demolish the Adair buildings located on the Upper Yard. The demolition will be paid for with general fund, which will be brought forward in a future budget resolution adjustment. Prior to demolition, staff will advertise to the general public that the buildings are for free, provided they are moved from the property. Staff will document the two buildings, including measurements and pictures, which will be retained at the Community Development Department and sent to the Clackamas Historical Society and State Historic Preservation Office. Prior to demolition, staff will work to retain portions of the Adair buildings, such as representative wood windows and sliding door for historical interpretation. And I believe that was consistent with the direction that the commission provided. So to summarize, we're proposing to hire a consultant to prepare a partition or a lot line adjustment of tax lot 500. We're requesting direction on what to do with tax lot 1700, which is located at 521st Street, and requesting direction on the inclusion of the armory building tax lot as a charter park. So that does conclude my presentation tonight, and I'd be happy to answer any questions that you may have.
Question before we move on, Commissioner? Commissioner Smith?
If you could go back to the map. Um, just a question about those different lots. We do not own a lot on John Adams. That M lot on John Adams that's not marked, is that our lot?
204 or the one with the asterix?
Next to 105 on John Adams.
No, we don't own that.
Next to 105.
Where's 105?
Next to 105. Yeah, yeah.
On Adams.
Oh, yeah.
That right there.
Yeah, no, that's a private lot.
That's a private lot.
We never purchased that lot.
According to the mayor and commissioner, I would have to look, Commissioner Smith. I don't think we do, but I did not look at that one.
Because I remember us purchasing a lot, and I always have thought it was that lot. I didn't think it was the lot on First Street, but I guess I might have been wrong with that. But I'd like to check that out, because if by chance we do own that too, it needs to be considered with this whole thing.
Okay, and the other thing, I'm sorry, if I could just real quick, the one at the very end where South John Adams intersects with South Center Street. There's a.
The fingers of.
That house we own is, the Public Works Department owns as well, but I think the intent would be to sell that. So I did not include that as consideration as part of the charter park.
Uh, that, that might be the one that I thought about, because I remembered it being on the end and coming to the park. So maybe that is the one, because I knew it had a house on it, and I don't remember the other one. So I don't know, I think that should be up for a discussion as part of the whole piece, what we want to do with that. It was also purchased for the same use as Public Works. It's next to the same piece of property, and I think we should, you know, understand what those individual lots were purchased for. If they went in, if they were part of the Public Works plan, then we need to consider how that fits into this park plan.
Okay, Commissioner O'Donnell, you have anything before we?
Hold on one moment, this lot here, this blank lot, just to confirm, the city does not, does not own that.
Okay.
Okay.
We do own 306.
The other lot that was pointed out that I was thinking, so that helps.
Okay, does anybody else have any questions for Mr. Conkle before we move on? Seeing none, then normally I would just go straight to citizen comment at this point, but I have a few things I need to say. One, we have little cards in front of us on the on the dais that talk about our rules. And I was very disappointed in Commissioner McGriff dropping this on us as a surprise walk on without having discussed it with pretty much anybody prior to this. It was obviously designed to be in conjunction with Mr. Boss, some kind of a way to try to force the commission to move into this this discussion without having the opportunity to have all the questions asked and answered. There are several questions that I'm certainly not anywhere near ready to designate this a park tonight or to have any kind of discussion about that. One, we don't have any idea what the property values are for all of these different lots. Whether you're talking about, you know, lot 500 or or any of those pieces, we need to understand what the appraised value is. We haven't had any real discussion about other uses of the Upper Yard other than a park. And this park or this this land belongs to everyone in Oregon City, not just the McLaughlin Neighborhood Association. And the fact is, is that when we put, when we took the First Street property and took it off the tax rolls, I believe we have a responsibility to try to equalize as much as we possibly can putting stuff back on the tax rolls so that, you know, it becomes even. So we're trying to maintain that, you know, cushion that we have in our in our permanent rate. I think the geologic issues, and we've all gotten at least 30 emails. I'd say 95% of them come from people in McLaughlin Neighborhood Association. And all, many of them cite these alleged geologic conditions that would make it impossible to build there. The fact is, is the armory's been there since the late 40s, and it hasn't been ripped down by a landslide any time in in that period. So I think the landslide issue is a red herring as far as maybe other possible uses other than a park in that area. I'm shocked that Ms. McGriff, who has been a staunch supporter of long drawn out and detailed public participation processes, is is trying to drive this through the city commission without any kind of discussion with other neighborhood associations, other organizations, without hearing from the Parks and Recreation Advisory Committee. There's a number of processes that we, when we met in our retreat two years ago, or was it a little more than a year ago? We had this discussion, and we said we wanted to have a robust public process to discuss what, how we were going to utilize this property if we weren't going to use it for public works. And we haven't been able to do any of that, and the likelihood of us being able to do that anytime in the next several months is probably pretty small. And my last point is, and this is a tactic the McLaughlin Neighborhood has used time and time again. They name things to make it sound like it's important. And so now we're hearing this term for the first time, the South McLaughlin Neighborhood. Well, there is no such thing as the South McLaughlin Neighborhood, there's the McLaughlin Neighborhood. And there's, you know, northeast, south, and west, and everything in that boundary is the McLaughlin Neighborhood. So when people start to try to, you know, name things in order to get it some kind of a special value, that's just a misnomer. It's just exactly like when they started calling the Upper Yard Lower Waterboard Park, which it really isn't. There is no such thing as Lower Waterboard Park, it's never been named anywhere else. So those are just a few of the things that I wanted to talk about. In many of those emails, the tone was that we were thinking about somehow taking Waterboard Park away or that we were going to do some kind of destructive act to Waterboard Park. I responded to several folks and said, listen, what we're what we're discussing is potentially adding some land to Waterboard Park. But in no way does this jeopardize the trail from from down by the armory up to the promontory or any or any of the rest of of current Waterboard Park that is under protection by Chapter 10. I think that covers most of what I have to say, and anything I missed, we can talk about after we have public comment. So with that, we will start with, Ms. Riggs, why don't you just tell me who's coming?
Okay, let's begin with Cameron McCready on behalf of the McLaughlin Neighborhood Association. So I will go ahead and unmute Mr. McCready, and if he could just, let me make sure here, not sure if he's muted or unmuted.
He's up.
Okay.
Ms. McCready.
Maybe. I don't hear any sound. Did you call in?
He called in.
He looks like he's on video, but he doesn't have any audio.
Well, Ms. McCready, if you can hear us, work out your technical difficulties and we'll move on.
Oh, this might be him.
Yeah.
I'm gonna go ahead and admit this person. I'm gonna assume, let's see, the 31, nope, that's Tammy Jo Wilson, so I must have had that wrong. Mr. McCready, could you please call back to the number, and we can admit you to the meeting, and you could speak. So I'll go ahead and call Doug Neely to the citizen comment stage.
Mayor Neely.
Doug Neely, Oregon City, thank you. I am a member of the Parks and Recreation Advisory Committee, I'm not speaking on their behalf, but two years ago, they actually voted to have this area, making a recommendation to the commission, to have this area actually made into part of Waterboard Park. I've always referred it to as the Upper Yard, I've never referred to it as part of the park itself.
Can?
Yeah, he's, he just unmuted.
Can you hear me now?
Yeah. Uh, we can, but we're gonna go ahead and mute you for a minute and let Mr. Neely finish his statement, and then we'll come back to you.
Two years ago, as I said, it voted to actually make a recommendation to the commission to do so, and reaffirmed earlier this year that particular goal. So that is a goal that has been put forward by the advisory committee. Advisory committee is made up of many neighborhood associations, it is not simply the McLaughlin Neighborhood Association. Some people may not be aware that properties within three different neighborhood associations are adjacent to that park. It is a regional park, it's not a neighborhood park. Barclay Hills, Rivercrest, and McLaughlin Neighborhoods abut that particular park. And it is a major recreational area that I still use, even though I live far away from it, I still walk through that park on many occasions. So I actually support the this being actually brought into the park system. Thank you.
Thank you. Mr. McCready.
Yes, hi, Cameron McCready, resident of Oregon City, can you hear me?
Yes.
Good. Thank you for taking up the discussion regarding the addition of land to Waterboard Park. On behalf of the McLaughlin Neighborhood Association, I wish to express the support of this proposal. As you know, for years, the Neighborhood Association has advocated for the preservation of the Camp Deere buildings. And we remain convinced that those buildings are well worth preserving and rehabilitating. However, in the spirit of moving forward and resolving disputes, the Neighborhood supports the proposal discussed by the city commission at the May 6 meeting. The hope and expectation is that the Camp Deere buildings will be properly documented before removal and/or adaptively reused by the appropriate third party. The citizens of Oregon City have been following this issue for many years. Over the past five years specifically, there have been numerous presentations, hearings and commission meetings, as well as several local newspaper articles regarding the future of, quote, Upper Yard. The public is well aware of and has been actively involved in the discussion to preserve this land as parkland. This has been a high profile and very public discussion. And the public response has been overwhelmingly been in favor of charter protection. Now is an appropriate time to move forward with those protections. As a residential real estate broker, I know from years of experience that home buyers are paying more to be close to a park, especially one that has been, that is an off-leash area for dogs. In real estate, this is known as proximate principle. According to February 2020 article titled Designing Parks to Enhance the Community's Tax Base, John Crumpton, PhD writes, quote, "In contemporary times, elected officials rarely recognize the financial merits of parks. Their social merits may be accepted, but conventional belief states that parks are a costly investment from which a community receives no major or financial return. However, this perspective overlooks the enhanced property taxes stemming from increased increments of value of properties located close to parks," close quotes. The McLaughlin Neighborhood Association looks forward to reviewing the draft ordinance associated with the addition of land to Waterboard Park. We intend to support the document while offering any constructive comments we may have. Our membership is excited to work with the city and the broader community to realize the shared vision of this space. Protection of this area as parkland is paramount importance to the McLaughlin Neighborhood Association. We sincerely thank you for taking up this discussion. We urge you to move forward as planned. This concludes my testimony. Thank you.
Thank you. Mr. McGriff is next.
Um, so next we will have Tammy Jo Wilson, and I'll go ahead and mute Tammy Jo Wilson. And if you could just begin by stating your first and last name and city of residency for the record, and you have up to three minutes.
I'm here, can you hear me?
Yes, go ahead.
Okay, hello, my name is Tammy Wilson, thank you for hearing my testimony. I am a resident of the McLaughlin Neighborhood. I can actually see Lower Waterboard Park out my bedroom window right now. I have witnessed how the lack of recreation space has become problematic. As younger families call McLaughlin Neighborhood home, children resort to playing in the streets or in the Public Works parking lot during off hours. Our neighborhood needs parkable space for recreational activities. With the proximity to the Willamette Falls Museum of the Oregon Territory, the Promenade, and Kenema, South McLaughlin Neighborhood is becoming an important representation of Oregon City to its visitors and residents. Tourists visiting Willamette Falls in the near future will be venturing into the McLaughlin Neighborhood. Waterboard Park could become a crown jewel of Oregon City with its beautiful vistas, forested trails, and open space recreational offerings. Lower Waterboard Park can provide needed gathering spaces like a community garden that can engage youth and families while providing safe places where neighbors can gather in a beautiful natural setting. Open spaces are becoming extraordinarily rare in our changing world. Having space set aside for the public will be critically important as we reconsider recreation, community, tourism, public resources, and the health of our city. Thank you.
Thank you. Next.
Okay, so next we will have Josh, I'm not sure how to pronounce the last name, I'm guessing Habre. And I will unmute Josh, and if you could please begin by stating your first and last name for the record and your city of residency, and then you have up to three minutes to speak.
You with us, Josh?
It sounds like we're having some technical.
Can you hear me?
Oh, yes.
There we go, go ahead.
Hi. Josh Hover, resident of Oregon City. Oregon City is a unique place with many unique attractions that are awe inspiring to visitors. These unique places are what inspired me to move here when I visited so many years ago. And it's not just the falls that we're known for, but it's places like Waterboard Park. I, I am under no impression that you want to take Waterboard Park away, but I'm advocating for additional parkland. And I believe that much of the community already views the land in question as parkland already. Sitting aside, this land will be in line with the Oregon City Parks Master Plan that identifies the south end of the McLaughlin Neighborhood Association. That's not identifying it as a new place, that's just simply a descriptive term of the McLaughlin Neighborhood. The south end of it is not having enough park and open spaces. As a father of a young of young kids, we struggled with where open spaces for kids to play are. And this, creating a place for the youngest residents of Oregon City to get out in nature and explore and have more adventures, be pioneers, that would be incredible. I urge you to make history by designating the land in question that the city already owns as parkland and make it available for the entire public to use. To do so would be showing future generations that the leaders in 2020 saw the. To do so would be showing future generations that the leaders in 2020 saw the significance of investing in preserving natural, public spaces for everybody to use. This, this would be a situation where everybody wins, not just today, but for generations to come. And as you know, circumstances like this don't come along very often. I urge you to take this opportunity to create more park and open space before it gets gobbled up for other uses. Thank you.
Thank you.
So next, we will ask Rob Justice to speak, so I will unmute, unmute Rob's mic here. And if you could just begin by stating your first and last name for the record and your city of residency, and then you have up to three minutes.
Yes, uh, I assume people can hear me?
Yes, sir.
Um, so my name is Rob Justice, uh, I, uh, live, uh, actually in the Stafford Hamlet, uh, but here in Clackamas County. Uh, I worked for, I wanna give kind of a, kind of a, a, alternative idea. Uh, I work for Home First Development, uh, we exclusively build affordable and workforce housing. Uh, we have been working statewide, however, because I live in Clackamas, we've been looking for large parcels to potentially build workforce housing, uh, in Clackamas County. And, you know, we actually, because we knew Public Works were moving, uh, the Upper Yard is of interest to us. Uh, we actually have, uh, done kind of a informal, uh, study of, of the, that, that, those lots, uh, with my architect and my general contractor. And we believe that, you know, we could build a workforce housing, uh, a really nice, family-friendly project on that property. So as you're kind of considering the future use, uh, one of the ideas that hopefully, uh, you know, you'll explore is, uh, looking at that property to be used for workforce. Uh, I think everybody knows the need, uh, that exists for affordable and workforce housing, so we would love to have an opportunity to explore that possibility and partner with the city. Uh, so one alternative for that property could be workforce housing. Thank you.
Thank you.
So the last one I have on here is for Jesse Bus. I'm going to go ahead and unmute Jesse's mic and, uh, begin whenever you're ready.
Good evening, Mr. Mayor, can you hear me?
Yes.
Thank you. Again, hello, Mr. Mayor and Commissioners, I am speaking on behalf of myself, not representing anyone, just here as a resident of Oregon City. Uh, I wanna start out by emphasizing what former Mayor Neely said, which is that this matter has been under discussion in the public for years. It's gone before PrAC twice. The first time in 2018, they formally, um, adopted a recommendation to the City Commission to add this land to Waterboard Park. And in early 2020, they reaffirmed that. So these have all been public processes. This is not something that is coming out of nowhere. This has been in the public eye for at least five years. So the suggestion by the mayor, the current mayor, that this is coming out of nowhere without public involvement is just incorrect. There's been a lot of public discussion about this, and PrAC has made their opinion clear. PrAC, of course, is the official Parks Advisory Committee that the city generally listens to on park matters. So I suggest that the, the attempt to get more public process on this issue is not genuine and that the, it's simply attempt, an attempt to cause delay in the momentum that the public has behind this issue right now. Uh, also, you know, if the mayor mentioned wanting to do an appraisal of this land and figuring out what was paid for it, well, I can tell you what was paid for the large Waterboard Park parcel back in 1910, um, including the area you're talking about tonight and everything upwind of it, was paid $2,500 in 1910 from Harry Jones, so. Um, just so you know, uh, I would support selling the residential property on Center Street, the rental house. Um, I would support selling the lots down on Center Street, put those back into residential development. But to respond to the gentleman that spoke just before me, this is not an issue, it should not be made an issue of housing versus open spaces. We should address our housing needs by increasing density and building smarter in our existing residential areas, not by taking away open space. This is becoming a problem statewide, uh, not just in Oregon City. Regarding tax lot 1700, I, I would suggest that be added to the park as well. That's an isolated lot on the top of the cliff. There's really no way to access it other than through this land. So if you sold it, the owner won't be able to get to it except through a driveway through, through the park. And, uh, you know, you all know my position on this, I'll just leave it at that. Thank you very much for this opportunity to comment.
Thank you. Anybody else?
Uh, no, that is it, Mayor.
Okay, then we are on to discussion. Uh, Commissioner Smith?
Okay, um, first of all, I want to thank all of the citizens who made comments to point out all the flaws and everything that the mayor said. Um, I don't have to necessarily go through those, but they're correct in that this has been deprac. In fact, I also believe, I can't find it at the moment, but I think we received a letter from the Parks Foundation as well. The other, the only other issue, um, that I really wanna make a comment about is, um, to imply that, um, Commissioner McGriff just brought this out of thin air is, is absolutely ridiculous. Um, in fact, there's been at least one city commission where a motion was made to make this a park, and that was by myself. Um, this has been talked about to no end. I know that we can't make it officially a park tonight because of the lot issues, but again, that's another delay, and this has been delayed and delayed and delayed. Um, and quite simply, it's because the mayor doesn't want it to be a park. Um, the problem with that, though, is that the last commission meeting, the majority of the commission after McGriff, Commissioner McGriff brought it up, said that we were willing to put this on the agenda, that's why it's here tonight, that's why we're talking about it, so it's not a surprise. Um, I think if we don't see, um, this, some action taken on this by the end of the summer, um, you know, I'm gonna be really concerned about that. Um, I believe that, my, my opinion on this has not changed. Um, I, as many people, believe that's always been a park, um, regardless of, um, what we've been told, um, by various people in the city. Um, I think that all three of those tax lots, um, probably should be part of the park, but I'm willing to talk about the, the houses. I, I think we need to talk about that piece that was, uh, men, that was, the, the house piece that was not mentioned in this. I don't even know why that wouldn't have been added to this tonight, and then the empty lot. I think those need to be considered. If we sell those lots, then I think that money, um, possibly could go towards a fund to help, um, in the next steps of a park. Um, so, um, we're kind of seeing a merger in a sense with our new Public Works slash Parks building, so that now any, um, any, um, plan to sell those properties specifically just for Public Works, I think goes out the window in my mind. Um, Public Works and Parks are sharing a new facility together. Um, and so I think we need to think about those pieces of property broader than just the Public Works use.
Is that it?
For now.
Can I see the screen so I can see who's got their hand up?
Yep.
Uh, Commissioner Smith, the I B force?
Yes, um, so, um, this is such a big topic, so where to start? So first, I wanna say that, um, before I launch into questions and concerns, I wanna say that, that in general, I support the Upper Yard, pieces of it or all of it, becoming a part of the park. Um, but I think there's a series of things that we need to take care of, and so I, I think those are the business pieces that we need to take care of and, and talk about. Um, so, um, but first, I have some questions. Um, so the small lot, tax lot 1700, uh, Mr. Bus from the public comment, um, made a statement that there was no access to that piece of property. Um, is that true? There's no access to that piece of property from what looks to be First Street?
Yeah, First Street doesn't exist there.
Yeah.
It's an, it's an unimproved right-of-way, so it's a, it's only a paper plat.
But it had a house on it at some point.
It did, and, um-
Very old rundown house.
So my question, is, is, is it a buildable lot? Is-
I believe the access was taken off of John Adams' near the Adair Buildings.
So where's the access for 518 then?
That one's down below.
Below, yeah.
We, I, I would have to go get more information.
Yeah, sorry.
Specifically, how, how it would be accessed, or i- if it's feasible to access it from a different location than it historically was.
I guess it just, it makes it difficult for me to have an, an opinion about what to do with that lot. Um, because pers, I mean, I, I love, I lost, I lost the map, but that's okay. I, I like the idea of, of turning it over to the tax rolls and putting a house back on it, it's right next to the park. It's, it looks like a great location, little lot to have a little house on it, but if there's no access or if that can't be worked out, then obviously that won't work.
It was a small driveway that basically that person used, and the house was very, very rundown, which is one of the reasons why we ended up buying it.
Yeah, um, so I'm wondering, um, has the Public Works, I'm happy to see John Lewis join the, the video, has, has Public Works talked at all about, um, cleaning up, uh, the stuff that is there and particularly moving those storage bins to another location? Or is it, we've been so focused on the First Street property, we have, we haven't gotten there yet, or, or what?
John, do you wanna talk a little bit about storage bins?
Uh, right, a couple things. The, first of all, that, that small lot, if you could bring the map up again, Katie. Um, the, that small piece of property, when we bought that piece, they were taking, I don't know, m- many of you have been on the site, so you know, there's kind of a, kind of a drive aisle that goes around what we call the Canary Building.
Right.
And that drive aisle is now gated off, but, um, that was the access to this house. There is no other access other than through tax lot 500, so to make that clear. Um, you know, bin storage, obviously, if we're in a position where, um, that needs to come off, um, you know, we use that pretty actively and, um, but, you know, if we gotta move it, we gotta move it. So that was my understanding, is if, if that becomes part of property, those facilities would be, um, disassembled, if that's the direction, if Parks needs them, they could stay, there's lots of options there, I guess, or a couple options there.
Okay, um, so I guess, um, I guess to address some of the public comment that we received, um, similar to what the mayor said earlier, um, this piece of property is not going away, it's city-owned, we're not in a hurry. It's not like this is a, a piece of property that we've learned about this becoming available and therefore we need to bid on it to make sure we get it. We own it, it's not going anywhere, so it's, it's in our best interest to make sure we take care of these, these loose, these loose ends. Um, and so for that reason, um, I don't know that I'm prepared to move to a vote specifically about the Charter Park pieces, but I think we can start checking off a lot of these, these things that need to get cleaned up along the way. Um, 'cause I think we have some out, outstanding issues that we need to resolve. Um, the other thing that, um, hasn't been mentioned here tonight, or in any of the public comment, um, except for one, one email that I saw, and that was the fact that our Parks budget is $25 million, um, in a hole and in, in a deficit. Um, we don't have any money to do park improvements, to add playgrounds, to add tracks, to, uh, I think the community had great comments, and I like, I like your ideas, and I agree with you. I just, I wanna set expectations, um, to be realistic by the fact that even if we move this forward, yes, it adds protections to the property, and I'm, and I'm, I'm okay with that. I just, I just wanna set realistic expectations that it doesn't mean this is gonna turn into the best park in Oregon City, um, with a bunch of amenities on it, um, in the near term. So I, I just, that, that funding piece, um, hasn't been discussed and it hasn't come up, but we have to take that into consideration, and there are a lot of people in Oregon City who have playgrounds that are falling down and who are asking us to come in, and, and if we don't even have money for trash cans, um, and some minor repairs to our other playgrounds, it, it, it's a, it's a juggling act and, and it is a balance and it's part of the conversation. So I just wanna be really realistic about that. And, um, I do support, uh, selling the lot with the house, the one that Commissioner Smith brought up. I think that's a great idea. Um, it probably wasn't part of this package in the city's defense because they did exactly what we specifically asked them to do at the first, uh, May meeting, and we didn't mention this house, but, um, if we can get agreement here tonight, pretty simply, then, um-
It needs to be sold.
And I think, just to clarify, that house, and John, correct me if I'm wrong, but the house, so that's 306 Center.
Yeah.
Um, I didn't include it, um, because it, it was purchased with utilities, utility funds. So that, that's another one where if we wanted, if we wanted to include it at the park, we would have to buy it, and, and the appraisal on it was just off Zillow, we hadn't done an appraisal, was pretty high.
Right.
And if, if it's my mistake, that's, you know, we, we can always add it, but it was a lot with a big house on it that's expensive.
And the reason we bought it was because if we were gonna put the Public Works out there, they had to reconfigure the intersection of Center and-
The access.
It was for right-of-way acquisition.
The access is going up to it, yeah.
So I think it's a great piece of property to put back on the tax rolls. Mr. Lewis?
Um, well, I just wanted to clarify, so tax lot 1700 and 306, and actually, uh, the other property that's down below, uh, next to 122, between 122 and 114.
Mm-hmm.
You know, those have been site acquisitions that have been fully funded through the utilities, so, um, you know, utility funding and, and there, there is the color of, of money when it comes to utilities and care and caution in how we pay for those. We'd have to go back and audit all of those, but, um, they were all, they were all funded through, um, acquisitions that I went through, and, um, it was all utility funds.
Okay.
Oh, so I guess I didn't say anything about, thank you, John, um, Adair Buildings and Armory Building. Um, I think the Armory, we're waiting on, uh, the demolition.
They've started, they've started.
They've already started, so-
They've got dumpster there.
That's great, it will revert back to city and then, and then we can make a decision on that one. Um, so that is one of those pieces in the chain of things that need to happen. Um, and then at the same time, the Adair Buildings, it sounds like we kind of have agreement on documenting those buildings and getting those demolished, so, um, I, I think you'll have, likely have general support, but I don't know that we can get to a vote as far as the Charter piece, but I think we can chip away at some of these other things and then circle back.
And just on the Adair-
You been on the demo?
On, certainly, and, um, sorry, real quick, on the Adair Buildings, my understanding was to get estimates, quotes.
Yeah.
And even if it was in my signing authority, to bring it back to the commission to have a discussion about whether to do it or not. That was how it was left last time. If that's changed, let me know.
I think we should address it tonight.
Yeah.
It sounds like there's been a change.
Yes, there has been, yeah, I'm supportive of-
I think there's support to go ahead and-
If it's within my-
If it's within your purchasing authority.
Yeah, go ahead.
Um, as long as it's-
Do I hear any head shakes about doing, Frank, Commissioner Smith, do you have any reason to, to say no to that?
I think as Mr. Conk will be finding, giving people the opportunity to take the building or remove the building within a specified period of time, but otherwise it's gonna be demolished, I'm fine with moving ahead under those certain, under those conditions.
All right, thank you, Commissioner Smith.
Um, I would just say, I don't want to see those buildings torn down and then somehow we decide that this isn't, this isn't gonna be a park, when that's kind of what the discussion has been, about tearing those buildings down.
All right. Uh, Commissioner McGriff?
Uh, I will defer to Commissioner O'Donnell.
Oh, I'll defer to Commissioner McGriff.
We have a standoff, all right. Um, I was just gonna let you say what you needed to say. So first of all, uh, I wanna say, uh, that I appreciated the information that I received from the city staff, and I also appreciated the fact that, um, there were people interested in. So first of all, I wanna note that, as was already stated, this has been deprac twice. Uh, once, I was actually in attendance, uh, in 2016 where they made this vote. vote. Second of all, this property has been in public ownership, so it has no effect on the tax rolls whatsoever, and this is a citywide issue. This is not a McLaughlin neighborhood issue. I was up there today on the top part of Waterboard Park and I ran into probably a half a dozen people from other neighborhoods that I knew because I was there doing something else on Promontory Street. Uh, just for everyone's edification, I want to reiterate what was already said, that this is not a runaround and for statements to be made as such are very disingenuous and are erroneous.
You walked this on.
I got permission from you all to do it. So I also want to say that I appreciate Rob Justice coming in. I had the pleasure of working with Rob in a previous iteration of my professional life and his professional life. And I will say that for the record, that I do not feel that development of that sort on the top part of water, of, of the upper yard is appropriate, but I do feel that the lower portion, which has all of the needed items, which is street access, utilities, transit, is better suited for redevelopment process. And that property that we're used for parking lots can be returned to the public rolls because that's what, when they were purchased during my tenure as a, an employee for the city. My position basically is that no one is asking for any park funds to be utilized at this time and I'm very excited by the prospect that we are going down to the, to the details of hiring a new Parks Director. One of the tasks of that person will be to update our sorely out of date park master plan. Some of the commissioners are aware that one of my concerns over my tenure in Oregon City and in my tenure in this position has been, I am interested in doing what is best for the community, what is at the best benefit all around for the community and also looking at our list of lawsuits that we have, and it's one of my goals is to reduce those substantially. Waterboard Park, even in its undeveloped state, is still an amenity for our entire city. I think I had mentioned at one time that the last time I drove up that, the Waterboard Park Road was in nineteen eighty-nine. I was showing my father around our community and I took him to the top and to the bottom and it was still drivable. Well, we all know kind of what happened to it after that. It is definitely not drivable in any shape, size or form. I know that many residents of the Rivercrest neighborhood are interested in having that preserved. They, you know, of course, they have beautiful views, the ones that, uh, do have some views, but there's beautiful trees up there. And again, I noticed that when I was up on top this afternoon, looking out over our beautiful city. So I am very sincere in my desire that we move this forward and that we can kill many birds with one stone. The unanswered questions that Commissioner Lyle Smith have are very easily remedied. Again, uh, she asked about that driveway to that house. That house was, uh, in effect when I moved here and I remember when it was torn down. I also am aware of the property that we purchased across the street that now have parking lots on them. And again, this has been, again, in public ownership for many, many, many years. That's all I want to say at this particular time, but thank you, Commissioner O'Donnell.
Commissioner O'Donnell?
If I could have the map, uh, displayed, it'd be helpful. Prior to that, let me just say that as the record shows and as the previous recordings would show, when Commissioner McGriff brought this up for purposes of discussion, I am totally supportive of it. I was then and I am now. And, uh, if, if our requirement is public engagement, if we've met that threshold citywide, we've met it, but I think, I'm going to restate this a couple of times. What we need to do in the end is determine the highest and best use of this property and each of us has our own thoughts on that. Um, questions defined by Mr. Cockle, and they involve the realigning of lot lines, as you can see, I mean, we've got the one that goes down the middle of the road, he's talking about a hundred foot buffer at the top of the cliff, not assigning, uh, the basalt cliffs to the lower yard. I mean, that's a good point. So we've got the realigning of lot yards, we've got the disposition of specific lots, whether that be seventeen hundred and maybe, uh, as we realign lot lines, can we make that a usable lot? Can we create access as we realign lot lines in general? Uh, we've got that house down on South Center Street, which is at the lower access and I, quite honestly, I'm supportive of selling that and, and taking the income from it. Um, you know, the things that, to me, there's a series of events that need to happen and the disposition of the, of the specific lots is one of them, the reversion of the Armory lots is another, the Adair Buildings is another, and, and those are agreements and I think there's a certain level of distrust among the parties and that, and that's unfortunate. Um, I'd like to set it, you know, I'd like all those specific questions answered and as to whether we decide to add some or all those lots to, to, to a park. And we can do that when we have this information answered and I don't care if we set a date, I don't care if it's as late as November. I know, I, I'm with Commissioner Lyle Smith. I don't understand the immediate urgency to do it. I want to do it right and I want to do it one time and I don't want to get downstream in a process and have the parties say, well, that's not my understanding. I want a clean cut. And, um, it's unfortunate, there's a certain level of distrust, but in the end, it's what is the highest and best use of this property. And I'm not offended by it becoming a park. I mean, I've been there, I, some of those letters were interesting, uh, that it'd be nice to have some flat land to go with the, uh, the other land there. So I just want to have all our ducks in a row before we, we make a move and I think it's important to do that and then come back to this commission. I know we started out, this was supposed to be a discussion, I didn't look for it to be a vote on either declaring it a park or not. I wanted this very discussion and I think that's what we have.
Commissioner Smith?
I guess I'll just make the statement, I wouldn't like to see it necessarily, um, drag on too long, but there is no immediate need to do it tonight. Um, however, if there's anyone on the commission that wants to have any say in this, um, and the future of this park, you probably want to do it before November.
Okay, so I have, uh.
Should have a turnover, you're right.
I sent, uh, Mr. Cockle and Mr. Robertson a, uh, an email a couple of days ago so that they weren't blindsided when asked this question. I asked, uh, list all the parks and open spaces in the McLaughlin neighborhood and approximately how many acres of city-owned parkland is in the McLaughlin neighborhood? Can you answer those two questions, Mr. Robertson?
Uh, yes, I can. Um, thinking over the maps and going through them, there's, I've identified that there's seven parks either directly inside the McLaughlin neighborhood or sharing a border with the McLaughlin neighborhood.
Can you state that number one more time?
Abernathy Creek Park, Dickinson Park. Uh, seven parks and then there are an additional five special use areas that are part of the amenities. So the standalone parks include Abernathy Creek, McLaughlin Promenade, Waterboard Park itself and the Richard Bloom Tot Lot. That totals thirty-nine point nine two one acres. And then the additional facilities include the Library and Park, the Pool, McLaughlin House, Ermentinger House and the Pioneer Center for an additional five acres, bringing up a total of forty-five point zero two acres of public properties within that neighborhood.
And that doesn't include things like, um, the big open space with trees below Barkley, uh, Bar, Bar, Barkley School. Um, did I hear Ladderet Park in that list?
Yes.
Um.
Did you hear Ladderet Park in there?
It doesn't include the grass play area at, at, at St. John's School. Um, you know, there, there are several other areas inside the McLaughlin, and, and the reason I'm bringing this up is, in many of those letters, they cite that, that McLaughlin neighborhood has as short as your parkland. Um, but if we look at that forty-five acres or so of parkland that's in McLaughlin neighborhood, compare it to how much parkland we have in Park Place, which I believe is zero.
We have a park in Park Place, Park Place Park. The one we're replacing the play equipment.
Oh, okay.
Yeah. Forget that, because somebody set it on fire.
That's.
Yeah.
Pretty small, so it, it's difficult to make the argument that somehow the McLaughlin neighborhood is short on parks. Um, one of the things that Commissioner Smith said that, that still drives me crazy to this day is that this has been a park for a hundred years and we all know that and everybody knows that, except for the courts. And we went through a long, drawn out trial and the Circuit Court said, no, it wasn't a park, has never been a park, has never been designated as a park. So that's the only legal description that we have of water, of, of the upper yard and, and the lower yard for that matter, is coming from a court of law. So you can have your opinions all you want, but in, at the end of the day, what the court says matters. Um, so I'm not opposed to having the upper yard be a park. What I am opposed to is, is, is being driven towards one decision instead of us looking citywide and asking folks, what other possibilities might they be? When I say we need to have a community discussion, I mean, have a charrette or two, would we say to the general public, what are your ideas about using it? Not just necessarily park, workforce housing, maybe there are other ideas, but I think we should, we owe it to our community to have that discussion, not just being driven by one special interest group to say, this has to be a park. Uh, does anybody have anything else on this subject?
Good.
Yes.
Commissioner Smith?
Um, can I ask a mayor question?
Sure.
Would you consider the McLaughlin Promenade a park?
Well, yeah, because it's being, it, it, it's either in, in Chapter Ten now or it is in the process of being, I forget which.
Process.
But it was never designated officially as a park.
And that's why we're doing the pre-Chapter Ten process, to get all those places named as a park so they have park protections. And I was the champion to that. I tried to get it done for three years and we're finally just now getting it accomplished.
So legally, McLaughlin Promenade is not a park, but you said just now that you believe it to be a park, correct?
We're in the process of doing that, yes.
You guys are arguing.
Yeah.
Over semantics.
Yeah.
Yeah, I, I don't want to argue over semantics.
That's true, I'm not, that's true, but the point is, there's more than three commissioners that want this topic discussed and feel it should go forward and yet we have the mayor continue, continuously trying to derail it. So, um, he can talk on for an hour. The point is, the majority of the commission wanted this on the topic and, uh, tonight, including yourself, Mayor, who actually said nothing about this being a shock to put it on the agenda tonight at our last meeting, you were fine with that. So why are we wasting time? Let's answer the questions, move forward at our next meeting, have a lengthy discussion and put this to bed.
Commissioner O'Donnell?
Oh, I don't want to be argumentative about semantics, park, not park, uh, the amount of land that's in, that's dedicated to parks within the, I don't really care. This is about one thing and one only, the highest and best use of this piece of property.
I agree.
And, and once we get these questions answered that were posed by Mr. Cockle, then I'm prepared to move on and make that decision. And I think parties are, I, I don't want to become adversarial. For once in our life, we're moving forward to try to get something accomplished. I think there's specifics, you know, the access to seventeen hundred and should that, should that lot be included or is it a, a marketable lot that could be used or should it just simply be included? Simple questions like that and I want to work together and get this done. So, uh, I, I don't want to get into an argument about who said what and, but let's just give direction to city staff to move forward, answer those questions they posed, set a date certain that they're comfortable and have those answers and let's make a decision.
I agree.
Are you making a motion?
Now, hold on. So there's one other question I want to answer and, and that is, I would like to know the real market value of all of these properties, um, as of right now or as of an appraisal, including the upper yard, the, the properties on Center Street, um, all of the stuff that we're talking about. I don't think we can make a reasonable fiscal decision about this without knowing what their current values are.
Well, those values can be stated for purposes of the ultimate decision and I don't have any objection to having a value assigned to them, but in the end, it comes back to, regardless of value, what are we going to decide to do?
Right, and I think what we need to do is let staff go back and answer, attempt to answer the questions that Commissioner Lyle Smith had, the, the questions I had, uh, the questions the rest of you had and bring it back in, you know, a month and a half or two months when, when we have an opportunity to all be in the same room and actually hear from staff live and in person and, and we can have that discussion then.
I think that, that's too long of a timeframe.
Hawaii?
Having to spend money on an appraisal for property that's been in public ownership for decades is irrelevant as far as I'm concerned.
Well, maybe.
It doesn't, would you let me finish, please? Thank you. It's not relevant, in my opinion, to the question of whether the upper yard should be a park or not. The properties that we purchased that were on the tax rolls at one time, yes, that probably is relevant because, again, I know what they were when, before they were purchased by Public Works, so they had some value, there were homes on them. Uh, the tax lot seventeen hundred, again, you know, maybe there can be access to it or maybe not, but it's, it's, again, part of that rocky outpropping and the house that was there was probably built in the late nineteen hundreds. Who knows whether something could be built on it again? It's, it's, it's not, uh, that point. What I'm concerned about is that, as Commissioner Smith said, is that these, the answers to these questions are very simple. The way that the city manager phrased them, I thought was reasonable. I, you know, I would support us hiring the consultant to do, prepare a lot line adjustment. I think that we should look at, um, tax lot seventeen hundred. I do not think it should be, uh, a separate tax lot that should be sold because I've been there. I know, I knew how to get there, so I have looked at it again. The Armory, uh, we'd already kind of discussed that. Uh, it's just not, it's not rocket science. And again, we have been talking about this, as Commissioner Smith noted, for a very long time, prior to your, private, even to your tenure, uh, Mr. Mayor.
Okay, so the value may be irrelevant to you, but it is relevant to me and many other citizens of Oregon City because the fact is, is that we were intending to use this space as the Public Works site. And since we're not going to use it as a Public Works site, we spent another eight or nine million dollars to purchase another facility, another chunk of land that we've taken off the tax rolls and I want to know what the balance is. I want to know what this land is worth in today's dollars so that we understand how much more land we're taking, if we're going to do this, how much more land we're taking off the tax rolls. You know, I, I have always believed fiscally responsible behavior by governments is when you, when you buy something to take off the tax rolls, then you should try to balance that so that you're keeping your property tax rates down. That's the reason I want to know what the values are.
I understand that, but that property's never been on the tax rolls since nineteen hundred.
That's not the point. The point is, is we took property off the tax rolls.
To buy first.
To buy the new Public Works.
I understand.
So I want to, I want to know what the balance is and I, you know, if you don't care about that, that's fine with me.
I do, I do care about it. I am probably one of the most fiscally conservative people that you would probably know. I don't believe in spending money idly, I don't believe in throwing money away. I also don't believe in spending a lot of money on, on, uh, many of the things that we have going that we're going to be talking about in our executive session. I have really objection to that. So let's move on and let's.
All right, let's hang on now.
Unless we want to make a motion.
One thing we're going to make clear is, if you look at the, at the list there, the mayor runs the meeting, not you.
I do not run the meeting.
You're right, you don't. So, uh, does somebody want to make a motion? Commissioner Lyle Smith?
I would like to hear from Mr. Cockle to see what he thinks his directives are. After all of this discussion, do you have a list that you could recite back so that we all are aware of what you captured? Not all of our comments, but things that we've said we're interested in to bring back.
I will try. Okay.
Well, you could identify things where you're still looking for direction from us.
Yes. Well, I think, uh, you know, I think this is one of the things, I guess, yeah, I was going to summarize to make sure that there is at least consensus that this is what you want us spending time and money on, because everybody kind of brought up separate issues one, one off and there wasn't really a follow-up discussion. So the, the, um, the access to seventeen hundred, okay, I think that's pretty simple. Uh, John's very familiar with the site. I mean, there's always a way, right, to engineer something, but if we look at how it's historically been done, it's been through the park.
Okay.
So, that being said, uh, you know, I did put in here that the minimum.
Not through the park, Tony, not through the park.
The upper yard.
The upper yard. Sorry, John.
Thank you, John.
Thank you, John. Um, the, I did put in here that that was purchased for a hundred and fifty-five thousand dollars. Uh, you know, one of the things that I have to do some work on with Bill is, you know, that was in two thousand and six. So the complicated part is that there was a house on there when we bought it. So if we do an appraisal, you know, do, do, if we appraise it at what it's owned, which is institutional versus. you know, do do, if we appraise it at what it's zoned, which is institutional versus a single-family home, right, we're going to get a range. So it could be higher than that one fifty-five. I put the one fifty-five in there because that's the minimum, that's what the utility paid in two thousand and six.
And that's when we have to pay back the utility fund.
Well, and and what we need to figure out is if we have to apply inflation to that since two thousand and six or nine. So some caveats here.
I mean, if if we, if you're pretty certain that access is not really feasible and the commission thinks that we we should include, I mean, I was just wondering, I I wasn't aware of that until Mr. Bush brought it up in public comments.
Since we're going to come back, we can look at it. I just, we're not going to spend a whole lot of time trying to design some other way to get it.
No, 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 don't, don't do that.
Okay, so then appraisals. So we we know we've got seventeen hundred, which is the small tax lot. We've got five hundred, which is the bigger tax lot. From what we've looked at, you know, that was part of the water board, then it was brought into the city. So that, we we haven't found any restrictions, any, you know, thing that says, you know, that has to be paid for to the utility fund. And then we have the house at three oh six. I guess, do you, is that?
I don't think anybody's opposed to selling the house at three oh six.
We need to sell it, it's not.
Okay, so I, but I don't necessarily need to do an appraisal as part of this conversation.
No.
Okay, so that helps. You know, really, those were the, we had the, so do we want an appraisal of seventeen hundred and five hundred?
Seventeen hundred doesn't make sense if we're just going to conclude it with the.
Yeah, I I don't care about that. What I'm, what I'm talking about is the majority of the property in the, in the upper yard. And I want to know what the value is of of the stuff that we own on Center Street and across this, you know, and across Center Street.
Okay, so you want an appraisal.
Doesn't necessarily have to be an appraisal, I mean.
Are you comfortable with us going off Zillow?
No, but I mean, you could go to, you know, a real estate consultant. There are people out there that can give you, you know, pretty decent numbers without doing, you know, the surveying and all the other things that appraisers do.
So you want upper yard, lower yard, and the properties across Center Street?
Yeah, everything associated with Public Works and in that area.
Other, other than?
Other than seventeen hundred.
The house at three oh six and that tax lot seventeen hundred, that's so minor compared to the rest of the size that it really is a drop in the box.
I think it sounds like it's going to get included with tax lot five hundred or whatever happens with that.
Yeah, it would be included in tax lot five hundred.
Yeah.
All right, so that's what I've heard so far, okay?
And then we, you know, once staff has gotten, you know, answers to most of those que, or the answers to those questions, and we understand, you know, those things, um, then we can come back, um, in, you know, like I said, a month or two. Um, it it's pretty clear that, um, you know, we're going to be in this mess until at least the end of July. And, you know, we're having difficulty getting through our agendas the way they are right now. Um, we're already probably an hour past the point I would have liked to have been on this big agenda tonight. Commissioner Smith.
And I agree with pushing things off on the agenda. However, um, this has been pushed off for years. So I would like, uh, the city manager to tell us what a realistic timeframe is to answer those questions. Is it going to take a month? Is it going to take a week? Is it going to take two months?
I would propose to try to find out, because the lag's going to be finding a consultant to do the, to come up with costs for the property, what the values are. We're going to have to go find somebody to do that. You know, once, once we have that, you know, that's, that's really the bulk of the work here, is is the value, of trying to find the value. Um, so, you know, realistically, you know, we're talking probably six weeks, just, just guessing.
Then what about this consultant to do lot line adjustments and stuff? Is that something you can get done right away? Or you want to, I I would prefer to wait until we have some decision about what exactly we think we're going to do with the thing.
I guess that's another, I mean, that's one of the questions, that was the whole premise of this, is do you want us to start that work?
Yes.
Or not?
Yes.
Commissioner Smith.
I would like to make a motion to have this come back at our first meeting in July and no later.
That's a real motion, I'll second that.
Move and second it. For discussion, call roll.
Oh, wait. I have, I have one more request of Mr. Conkle.
Go ahead.
When you come back in July, um, it would be really helpful. Could you have a map of what your proposed partition? You kind of read off your thoughts about the bluff and all of that. And it would be really good to see that, even if it's a drawing, um, an estimated proposed line, so we could see what it looks like.
Yep, and so the proposal was to essentially be about a foot or two behind the top of the bluff.
Yeah.
Yep.
Yeah, so like something with acreages that we can actually see, you know, things.
All right, call roll.
Frank O'Donnell.
Aye.
Commissioner Rocky Smith.
Aye.
Commissioner Denise McGriff.
Could you skip me for the moment, I'm still thinking.
Commissioner Rachel Lyles Smith.
Aye.
Commissioner Denise McGriff.
Yes, thank you, um, city recorder Katie Riggs. Um, I think six weeks is too long, but in deference to my colleague, Mr. Smith, I will say aye.
And Mayor Dan Holliday.
Aye. And so, just so I'm crystal clear, I am not going out and starting the lot line or partition process. I am focusing on the value of the property and bringing back.
Right.
A proposed line.
As far as I'm concerned, you are.
Well, you're overruled there.
I understand, I'm voicing my opinion.
Okay, so, um, we're going to take a ten-minute break, and then we're going to come back. And do you think we're going to be able to get both, through both of these?
Yes.
All right, if we can do it in half an hour.
Oh.
Because then we have, you know, we still have, an exec session has three or four items.
Understood.
So we're going to adjourn for ten minutes. Can't he?
All right, we unmuted.
Commissioner O'Donnell, you back? There's Commissioner Smith. Hello, Mr. Turway. Commissioner O'Donnell, waiting on you. Well, let's get started. Uh, Frank could come in when he gets here. Um, I'm sure Laura has a few things to say as we move on. So we're going to, there's Commissioner O'Donnell. Uh, PC twenty dash zero six nine, first reading of ordinance twenty dash one zero zero five, amendment to Natural Resources Overlay District, approving file LEG nineteen dash zero six, Ms. Turway.
Thank you very much. The Natural Resources Overlay District protects water quality and function of streams through wetlands and adjacent habitat by surrounding features with native plantings and discouraging development. In response to the identification of a wetland in Kenema, which had previously not been included in the overlay district, the commission directed staff to initiate this process to include it within the overlay. Senior Planner Pete Walter will provide a report with additional details.
Thank you. Eddie, could you skip to the third slide, please? Okay, the previous one with the picture.
There we go.
Thanks. Okay, on March fourth and March eighteenth, the city commission considered this file. And following public testimony, directed staff to prepare a modified map depicting a narrower ten-foot-wide vegetative corridor. This corridor extends ten feet north from the wetland edge on the north side and is ten feet in width. Next slide. We prepared revised findings in which to consider the proposal. It provides a clear basis to support the modified proposal and balances property rights with the protection of the environment. We have heard the testimony this evening from Doug Neely and Karen Baja, uh, which I'd like to enter into the record. And you have the testimony before you. Next slide. Um, so staff is recommending approval of the first reading of the ordinance, um, which will add this vegetative corridor to this wetland and include it within the Natural Resources Overlay District. That's, thank you.
Thank you.
All I have.
Is there a motion?
We have voted.
Oh, Mayor Neely.
Could you put that last map back up? Not that one, the one that.
That's fine.
The other one.
The last.
That, that, that map actually eliminates my first two paragraphs, so I'll go into my fourth paragraph because some statements that were made by, at the commission meeting were not correct. The city commission meeting, uh, Mayor Holliday stated the planning commission had considered the natural resource issues before rendering its decision to remove the vegetative corridor on that property. It did not. It only considered the property owner's objection to the designation of the corridor. The planning commission asked the owner if she would accept a twenty-five corridor, foot corridor instead of, uh, for the fifty-foot corridor specified in the city code. And she said that she would not. The planning commission, after minimal deliberation, voted unanimously to remove the buffer from the property in its entirety with no discussion about the natural resource value of the corridor. This may be the reason that no staff findings, no, no staff findings of fact were presented at the March fifth meeting. I believe that completely removing a vegetative corridor without a code-based basis of doing so sets forth a dangerous precedent. Since establishing a vegetative corridor is also Metro Government's requirement, having a city, uh, commission designation with no findings of fact with a natural resource uh, itself could provide a strong, uh, a strong basis for appeal. Mayor Holliday also said that critters that live in the swamp, live in the swamp, implying that the vegetative corridor was irrelevant. Many insects and amphibian species spend their juvenile stage in the swamp, and the swamp is quote, and part or all of their adult stage on land. Aquatic reptiles and animals lay their eggs on land. From the Oregon City, uh, I'm speaking as the chair of the Greater Oregon City Watershed Council. From the Greater Oregon City Watershed Council's perspective, this is one of the primary benefits of having a vegetative corridor. Uh, and I was just going to ask and make the statement, you have, we have the two thousand-foot corridor on our, um, in Adres Berry, uh, bearing streams and, and that's more than required by Metro. And this recognizes a need for larger land habitat, habitat for, uh, such birds as eagles and osprey, such as beaver, uh, and muskrats and river otters that depend on both water and land-based habitats. I do support the, uh, I do support the, uh, uh, motion that is before you.
Now, is there a motion?
I don't want to make a mo, well.
I have some questions for Pete.
Go ahead.
I'm trying to find the part of the, so if, could you?
I'll go ahead.
If I find that, please, I'm, I'm trying.
Sure, um, so, um, if you'll recall, our vote to take this to the first reading, um, I voted no on it, and, um, and so I just, there are a couple of points. One, I, I, I don't like the idea of adding just a fifteen-foot strip on the five-fourteen Fourth Street property. I feel like that is very arbitrary, um, and.
I think it's only ten feet.
Or whatever it is, ten feet, it's, it's a small, the map's not up, so I, I don't know what it is. Um, to me, that comes across very arbitrary, and I think it, it opens, um, the door for a slippery slope of the next person that says, well, why don't you just give me a ten-foot, um, little thing? And, um, when you gave this other property owner that. So, um, the other piece of this conversation is that I believe that if development were to happen on that piece of property, on the five-fourteen Fourth Street property, um, that they would, the development would still have to, um, deal with the fact that the wet, that we know a wetland exists on that property. So for me, I would prefer, I, I see it as, I, I don't, because I don't like the little ten-foot strip added, my preference is we either rip the Band-Aid off and include the fifty-foot vegetative corridor, or we exclude the property altogether, knowing that any development, um, will have to deal with the fact that the wetland is there. And there will be some, you know, in that sense, we're treating that property the same as the adjacent properties, um, who just went through that process and, and, you know, that was part of the argument. They got to build and didn't have to deal with this, you know, they only had to deal with the known wetland. Well, the five-fourteen Fourth Street property, um, to be fair, could have to do the same thing. Um, so if I make my motion, my motion is, um, I, I'd like to know where the rest of the commission is. Um, I'm, I'm fine with, um, I'm trying to figure out which one is the right one. I think it's option number two in the staff report, uh, which modifies the original amendment that does not affect any portion of five-fourteen Fourth Avenue.
Is that a motion?
I, I didn't understand your question. You're asking us?
Well, I, I guess I didn't have a question. I was stating a lot of stuff on my opinion, um, and, and I guess the question would be to Ms. Turway or Mr. Walter or Christina. Isn't it true that, um, if any development were to happen on that piece of property, that they would have to accommodate the known wetland that we know that is on that piece of property that is not currently delineated?
Mr. Walter.
If they, if you adopt the vegetative corridor proposal tonight, um, as long as development is located outside of that vegetative corridor, they could develop outside of it, um, without having to do much, anything further, um, rather than reevaluate the wetland. That's my understanding. Laura, what's your take on that?
That is correct. The only thing I would add to it is if they build on the wetlands, they will always have to do the delineation and protect the wetland for DSL. So if they find, uh, markers of a wetland, you have to stop construction, work with DSL to delineate the wetland. You just, uh, wouldn't have to have that buffer around it, which is our vegetative quarter.
Commissioner McGriff.
I think I am understanding what Rachel Lyles, Commissioner Rachel Lyles Smith is suggesting or asking. And I, so I'm looking at the staff report. I mean, I guess part of my issue is the wetland is there. I think we have an obligation to designate it and to delineate it because it's been, it has been on the books forever. Uh, I can't go by, well, just because the next-door neighbor didn't have to do it, doesn't mean I have to do it. I think it's there, it needs to be protected, and I concur with, uh, Mr. Neely's assessment. Um, we need to designate it. I was willing to make a motion before, which I thought was, the ordinance we were bringing forth was that it would be, the, the boundary would be reduced a little bit to twenty-five feet, but that still would be there. I, I can't support a ten-foot, uh, designation the way this little map shows. Because I think it's, it's, uh, we're, we are not living up to our responsibilities, but we're required to do under goal five.
Let me see if I can, uh, uh, restate what Commissioner Lyles Smith is saying. I think she's saying that we either need to do what it says and have the fifty-foot buffer, or we completely don't do anything with this particular property. And I fully agree with that.
Right.
But I'm on the, you know, let's not do anything with its property category, because the fact is, is that, uh, they've owned it for a long time, and this is sort of new to that particular property owner. Um, it's unlikely anytime soon that anything will happen to that. And if it does, that they're still pushed back at least that ten, you know, that. I just think.
But they have to avoid the wetland.
You have to avoid the wetland anyway. And, um, while I understand people get really sensitive about, you know, every little, you know, pond or, you know, drainage ditch, the fact is, is this is a pretty small area. And it's, you know, we're not talking about, you know, fifty acres of development. You know, we're talking about at most, one more house that will have to be so. So I agree with Commissioner Lyles Smith that, uh, I think we're, we are in less jeopardy if we just say we're completely eliminating this one property.
Right.
Or do the entire fifty-foot buffer.
Right.
So I, I would be on the just left this property alone category.
Okay.
Commissioner O'Donnell, have you got anything for us?
No, I appreciate you, uh, defining it, because it's, it's right, it's either or. I don't want to custom make a decision that, uh, we have, we are faced with making those same kind of. same kind of special accommodations down the road, one or the other.
Commissioner Smith?
I agree with that.
So you have a motion, Commissioner Lyles Smith?
Are there any legal concerns? I see you guys over there kind of talking.
A, a brief chat, but no, you know, uh, I think what you're saying makes sense, either fully doing it or not doing it all. If you remember, this wasn't applicant-initiated, uh, quid judicial change, it was initiated by the city commission.
Right.
And so, um, you know, I don't know how that plays into things, but...
Okay. All right, um, then I will make a motion to approve legislative number 19 dash 00006 with the modification that the amendment does not affect any portion of 514 Fourth Avenue.
Is there a second? I'll second it. For a discussion? Call or roll?
Oop, uh...
Oh, sorry, first reading. Commissioner, Mr. Kamison?
Sure. An ordinance of the City of Oregon City amending the Natural Resources Overlay District, uh, print, Enrod, closed print, with the, uh, modification that the amendment does not affect any portion of 514 Fourth Avenue Tax Lot 3-1E-01AA-02300.
Call or roll?
Commissioner Frank O'Donnell?
Aye.
Commissioner Rocky Smith?
No.
Commissioner Denise McGriff?
I'm voting no because we know it's there. We are in legal jeopardy by not doing what we're supposed to do under the statewide land use planning goal, so I vote no.
Commissioner Rachel Lyles Smith?
Aye.
And Mayor Dan Holliday?
Aye.
Motion carries, moving on. Uh, PC 20 dash 068, first reading, ordinance number 20 dash 1006, Thimble Creek Concept Plan, Beaver Creek Road Concept Plan Code and Zoning Amendments, LEG 19 dash 03. Ms. Turway?
Thank you very much. The Beaver Creek Road Concept Plan imagines a redevelopment of a 453 acre site along the east side of Beaver Creek Road into a mixed-use sustainable community with an industrial focus. The plan was originally adopted in 2008 and was readopted in 2016, but did not include measures to implement the plan. Aside from some minor surgical changes to the concept plan, the proposal that you have before you tonight applies to, applies zoning of, and the comprehensive plan designations as well as amend select portions of the zoning code and various master plans to fully implement the Beaver Creek Road Concept Plan. Senior Planner Christina Robertson Gardner will provide a report with additional details.
Thank you, Ms. Turway. I have about seven slides this evening, though we have two additional items to enter into the record. Email from Christine Kaczynski and an email from Doug Neely. Ms. Kaczynski speaks about public engagement, transportation, geologic hazard comments. Mr. Neely discusses upland habitat. I'm happy to answer any questions the commission may have after the presentation about those comments. As Ms. Turway mentioned, uh, this Beaver Creek Road Concept Plan was initially adopted in 2008. It had a major goal to create a new neighborhood in Oregon City in the southeast portion of the city with, uh, new opportunities for jobs and housing and kind of a, a relationship with both the high school and the college. The plan elements are on your right hand side. It's 453 acres. There's some different, there's different districts, uh, as well, mainly employment to the north and housing to the south with some, uh, mixed employment housing in the middle with a new community neighborhood node right at Glen Oak Road, where you see that red circle. So really simply, the project purpose this last year was to translate and adopt a plan and vision into clear and objective development code, provide clarity when necessary and reach out to the community for additional feedback when needed. Uh, this is an adopted plan, that's a narrative document, and this needed, we needed to turn it into development code that could be approved projects at an administrative level. Uh, there was a fair, it's been a fair amount of public outreach. I, I know this is a pretty packed slide, but I wanted to put them all in there. Uh, we kind of had two phases of outreach. One happened in January to June of 2019. We reached out to property owners, uh, abutting the concept plan area. We sent an introductory letter to those within 500 feet of the concept plan, uh, boundary and within the boundary, let them know the project was happening. We have two signs along Beaver Creek Road. We had two meetings at Oregon City High School, as well as an open house here, and met with community members and stakeholders. Uh, we have an online, uh, project website as well as, um, public engagement opportunities and surveys. Uh, we met with the Caulfield Neighborhood Association on various occasions, as well as the Beaver Creek Road CPO. They are a community planning organization in Clackamas County that has, um, both, uh, presence at the southern end of the concept plan boundary, but they actually kind of have a bit of a boomerang, uh, maybe a crescent shape, so they also are, uh, represent areas along Holly Lane. Uh, the, let's see. So that, um, was the, our initial outreach was to reach out to the public, find out where, uh, the clarity we needed to, uh, create zoning code for this. Uh, we went to planning commission hearings starting last August. We had nine planning commission hearings from August to February. We mailed out a measure 56 notice, which is a legal requirement for properties within 300 feet of the concept plan boundary, letting them know this was going to happen. There were three committee, commission work sessions, uh, meetings with advisory committees such as PrAC and Natural Resource, uh, the Natural Resource Committee. Uh, we had additional surveys where we wanted to reach out for clarity with the community. We have those available on the slide, as well as general updates along the way to anybody here who's on our list serve. So for within really about one year process, uh, we reached out to the extent we could do as many people as we could through all the different ways we can, including, uh, trail news articles and our social media and reached out all the kind of venues we can. Uh, this was not a pu- public outreach to redesign the plan. This was to, uh, engage the community to, uh, move toward a adopted plan to, uh, create development code. City commission looked at this four times this last year, a work session on June 11th that went over the proposed code amendments last summer, two work sessions to discuss Beaver Creek Road cross-section and intersection design, and then a March 10th work session with Chair Mitchell, with our planning commission, uh, who went over the project overview and planning commission recommendations at that work session. The city commission, uh, provided staff with some additional questions. Staff included a memo, which is on your agenda, uh, which addresses the questions the city commission had at the March 10th meeting, and I'm available to answer any additional questions you may have from that, but, uh, the, those are available for your reference. Uh, the district zoning approach to this project is to use existing city zoning and when needed to be modified, there'd be subsections underneath. So in the mixed-use corridor zone, uh, excuse me, the, excuse me, campus industrial zone, there'd be a subsections for the new concept plan area. So some, uh, uses or development standards may be further refined, so you would go look at the existing zoning. We did not create new zones for this area. Uh, the overlay districts that are in this area, the natural resource overlay and geologic hazards already exist for prop, on the site for properties inside the city limits, and those are not proposed to be changed. We are just looking at adopting zoning for the underlying zones. The geologic hazards are still in place if you are, for properties that are annexed today. Uh, the products for this legislative adoption are, um, we have the comprehensive plan map amendments and zoning map amendments, so the maps that actually change the zone, the zoning text amendments for the development code, as well as, uh, amendments to ancillary documents to the comprehensive plan, and those are to your right. Uh, a new, uh, cover and refinements to the concept plan, which includes renaming the concept plan, Thimble Creek, addition to the parks master plan, which includes the two new parks, the South Central Open Space and East Ridge Thimble Creek Conservation Area, uh, including the trails, uh, that have been identified previously in the Transportation System Plan into the Trails Master Plan, as well as, uh, refinements to the Transportation System Plan based on the direction the city commission gave us in November about the width of Beaver Creek Road and the, um, intersection design of signals rather than roundabouts. Uh, so that is what is the part of the legislative packet, and those exhibits are part of the agenda this evening and are referenced in the ordinance. What is not part of the zoning amendment packet are things that really can't be addressed through the zoning code. Economic development strategies, working with our new economic development manager, I'm looking at potential grants and opportunities to leverage monies to bring companies and development, um, happen outside of this, this zoning package, as well as just ongoing coordination with our partners at Clackamas Community College and Oregon City High School on employment training opportunities, continuing conversations with, uh, Trimate on bringing transit service out to this area and funding potential future capital improvement projects. So those, all those items are not part of this zoning packet because they lie in other departments. I'm available for questions that the city commission have for me this evening.
Okay. So we beat this horse pretty well to death. Does anybody have any questions before we... Seeing none, is there a motion?
I don't...
Commissioner O'Donnell?
You know, among the many documents given us to read was a technical memorandum that was forwarded us through Christina Robinson Gardner, and maybe this isn't a proper place, but I mean, among the plans was a north employment campus, which is supposed to create about 3,700 jobs. We've sort of skipped that and gone right into 1,000 residential units. And I'm a little bit, in addition to that, I'm more concerned about our ability to provide essential services, so I skipped down to, uh, the water distribution plan. And there's a lot of reference, and I, and I don't know if we've got silos where our departments aren't talking to each other, but our most recent meeting, this commission was very firm about the ability of this city through Clack, uh, through, uh, through our own water distribution system to provide water and not enter into agreements with Clackamas River Water. So maybe this report is just dated, but it, because it still refers to, uh, teaming up with Clackamas River Water, uh, to serve this area. And I, I hope that they're talking to each other because that is not a direction that I care to go for the same reason we have these results like we're getting with Wes.
Ms. Turway, any...
I'd like to see that update.
Ms. Turway, you have any answer to that?
Yes, there certainly is a lot of coordination and actually, um, John Lewis and our Development Services Department will review all development proposals when they come in to assure that there is adequate services. And these larger, bigger picture ticket items are on that list of items to work out aside from the zoning code. So John Lewis and his group are the ones who will answer that, and there is certainly a lot of coordination.
So what we're, what are you...
Yeah, and that's...
Excuse me, Frank?
I, I understand that's a generic answer, but we were very firm about we, in our, in our, in our own South Fork water, we want to be the providers of critical services to areas within our city. And I mean, I understand that reports can cross in the night. This one's a little bit out of date because it was continuing reference to working with Clackamas River Water, and that, and that's all I need to say about it.
All right. I think, uh, you know, I think ultimately what we're talking about tonight doesn't really have anything to do with that, that that's something that's going to come up when development is actually beginning to occur. So we're trying to get the base zoning done tonight, I think is the answer to that question. Am I right?
Yeah, I mean, when you do zone change, you look at ability for the city to provide su- services, and we do have within our master plan...
Okay.
Uh, projects that can do that. If, if the city commission wants to choose different projects or different approach, that can happen after...
All right.
During development.
So is there a motion for the first reading?
We have, we have comments too. Yeah, and we have public comments, but I have a quick question for you as Doug's coming up. Um, could you show where the areas that, uh, that Mr. Neely is specifying, areas three and four?
Sure can.
This was the one...
Yeah.
Letter I was not able to get read before, um, the meeting tonight.
I thought this would be a case, so I have a secret slide.
I apologize for having to...
Sure.
Excuse myself for...
Oh, you're fine.
Yep, I have a secret slide. I knew this would be probably a, a question. So areas, uh, three and four, uh, and these are arbitrary numbers just for the, just for the process of conversation, are along the eastern edge. Uh, four is pretty much the edge of the golf course, and three is, um, a property owned by the Hall family that is farther up and connects up to South Loder Road.
I don't know, maybe I can say better...
And what you see in that map, uh, just real quickly, the, um, bright yellow is a geologic hazard overlay.
Mm-hmm.
The pink is our natural resource overlay district.
Mm-hmm.
And the golden rod, I guess, is a color, is the identified upland habitat areas that were, um, in the, the Beaver Creek Road Concept Plan, and this is the question.
Okay. Thank you.
Mayor Neely?
Uh, first of all, let me state that what I'm about to read is a letter that was submitted by our Chair of the Natural Resource Committee to the Planning Commission. When she did so, she, um, uh, she expresses a private citizen. She then discussed at the Natural Resource Committee, uh, uh, her letter and the Natural Resource Committee agreed that a presentation should be made, uh, by her, uh, on behalf of the Natural Resource Committee. So what I'm about to read is something that was presented to the Planning Commission, uh, at its, let's see, February 12th meeting, uh, but, uh, is actually expressed as a, a letter from the Natural Resource Committee as opposed to a individual. And this was, uh, presented by Nancy Brochat, uh, and she was, she is our Chair. "November 2019, the Natural Resource Committee recommended additional protections for upland habitat in the Beaver Creek Concept Plan, in particular, areas three and four were a concern to the NRC because they are part and of and continuous with a much larger forested area. I was somewhat dismayed by the Planning Commission's recommendation that no additional land be protected during the development of this property. Allowing development and tree removal in these two areas will contribute to forest fragmentation. I'm submitting these comments on behalf of the Natural Resource Committee. Forest fragmentation is one of the major documented negative impacts of urbanization and is an insidious threat to the natural areas. Large intact areas of forest contribute to the species diversification, both of plants and animals, help to remove pollutants from the air, mitigate climate change, and protect water quality. Development shifts away at the forest edges, reducing interior habitat until the land no longer functions ecologically as a forest habitat. The increased edge, while attractive to many species, is not suitable habitat to many important species such as woodpeckers, owls, and other raptors, and many migratory songbirds. As that edge habitat increases, the remaining forest has a different climate, increased invasive species, and increased predators and nest parasites, all of which leads to a decline in the abundance of forest interior species, of plants and animals. Large intact forest areas serve as refuges for specialized species. The loss of large forests due to fragmentation leads to localized extinction, extinction of species. I recognize the importance of the additional housing in our area, but we feel that the balance of development with protection of important natural resources, though that once gone cannot replace areas three and four, cannot be replaced. Areas three and four are important natural resources. Houses adjacent to forest areas have higher property values. Setting aside three and four would have tremendous economic value to the future property owners. An idea that would allow this area to be preserved while development occurs would, uh, would be to have the houses adjacent to these areas have yards with conservation easements that would, uh, protect intact forest. This type of development has occurred in many areas of Portland adjacent to Forest Park. Those parcels have been exceptionally, have exceptionally high values now as many people want to live in a forest. I realize that this would require the need for general density transfers to the development that could produce the level of housing required. I believe the ecological value intact forest habitat in areas three and four are well worth preserving for future Oregon residents. I appreciate your returning to this topic, implore, implore you to protect, implore you to protect valuable, large intact forest areas in areas three and four that is now rare in Oregon City."
Thanks, sir.
May I provide a little bit of background on this issue?
Just one second, Ms. Turway. So there wasn't anybody else for this? Nobody from AKS called you?
No.
Oh, okay. All right, go ahead, Ms. Turway.
The overall issue is that in 2006, we identified upland habitats in the Beaver Creek Road Concept Plan, um, and when we went to implement the concept plan this past year, um, we overlaid the Natural Resources Overlay District and the Geologic Hazards Overlay District, as well as our park land, and then we figured... well as our park land, and then we figured out how much land was unmapped or not protected. Those overlay districts, as well as the park land, provide some habitat protection. So the question was, how much land was not protected? We do have a citywide tree removal standard that would apply to all commercial property as well as land going through a land division in Chapter 1741 of our code, and the City, or the Planning Commission directed staff to say that among those four layers of things, the general tree code, natural resources overlay district, and geologic hazards, and the park land, that we have substantially complied with the spirit of the upland habitat that was mapped. So city staff was never directed to go back and reassess the habitat to see if it's still in place today or to create a separate overlay districts for its protection. If the City Commission would like to direct staff to protect this upland habitat, the only mechanism to do so would be to amend our code to create another overlay district or some type of mechanism to provide that habitat protection. But again, we haven't gone back and reassessed if it's still there, so we would recommend doing that first.
All right. Now, Commissioner McRae, if you had something?
No, I just thank you, Mayor Holliday. I wanted to just add that I think that the recommendation from the Natural Resources Committee is really important and that we do need to go back and do an assessment of that. I'm just trying to figure out, maybe Bill, you can help me, that if we make a motion, how can we, how can we have this added? Because again, knowing the pattern of development that we've had over the last 30 years that I've lived in this community, I have yet to see a development plan that saves trees. I just haven't seen it. So I'm not feeling that confident that we're going to have some miraculous act of God happen in this area, and these, and again, once it's gone, it's gone. We can't put it back. We can always move the houses and transfer density someplace else, but we can't get that back. So how can we make sure that this is being looked at, that we have some, we allow some sort of a density transfer? I don't want to create a whole new chapter in the code. This just takes too long. So how can we make sure that areas three and four are recognized, that this is a habitat that's been identified but not maybe verified for these purposes? I mean, I drove down there, but it's not like you can actually get there. So that's why I couldn't quite see it. I drove down there earlier in the week to try to see if I could see, I could see the trees, but I couldn't tell where the property lines were. So that's my question.
Before you answer that question, Mr. Kabaisman, I'd like to know if there is appetite from the rest of the Commission to open this can of worms again. It seems like we are at, you know, the very end of a almost 20-year process, and now we get some other new thing that, you know, is going to open all the can of worms again. I am not at all interested in going that direction. I think there are things that can be done, you know, through the planning department as this, as this and if this develops, when it does, but we've worked a long time, really hard at getting this set of zoning and the rest of the code amendments and all the things that are part of this project. I don't see any reason for us to stumble, you know, two yards from the finish line.
I don't disagree with you, Mr. Mayor. I just think that this was something that was overlooked. We have a Natural Resources Committee that's supposed to give us advice and guide us on these things. And, you know, I respect the people that are on there. I just respect their expertise. And it seems to me, again, once we take these trees out, they're gone.
Okay. Commissioner Lausmann?
So I'm interested in Mr. Kabaisman's answer. I'm hoping that it could be as simple as we could come back later and amend the in-rod boundary to include this area or something kind of simple. Is that possible?
I'm hearing two different questions. One is sort of a process question, and one is more substantive. The substantive, I'd probably look to Ms. Turway or Ms. Robertson Gardner about how those protections would be done. There is a whole variety of different things you can, you can do, some of them relatively simple, some of them more complex for a variety of different reasons. The procedural question I'm hearing more from the mayor is, do we make this as part of this project right now, or do we come back with another process to follow on something? You know, if it is relatively simple, come back with an amendment to that code, maybe, you know, go through another process, but much significantly smaller and much more focused? Does that make, does that answer your question or make sense?
So here's the motion I would like to hear. I would like us to do the first reading of this and at the same time, direct staff to take into consideration the letter and the recommendation of Natural Resources Committee and work to resolve those issues with the Natural Resources Committee and then bring that back to us. Is that doable, Mr. Conkell?
Mr. Mayor, what kind of an action would that be then? What is your idea of the action before we hear?
I think Ms. Turway probably has an idea here. Ms. Turway?
Thank you. I would say Christina could talk a little bit more about this as well, but we have gone to the Natural Resources Committee and the Planning Commission a few times regarding this particular issue. We have researched if there's easier low-hanging fruit ways for us to just include this in other overlay districts, and there's really not because there's no slope that's being protected, which is the point of geologic hazards. There's no stream that's being protected for natural resource overlay districts, and it's already subject to the tree protection standards in Chapter 1741. So we would have to create a new overlay district. We have had a few different meetings with the Planning Commission and then gone back to the Natural Resources Committee to relay the information back and forth between the two bodies, and short of coming back with a new overlay district, I'm failing, and our Assistant City Attorney Carrie Richter as well, is failing to identify a process or a mechanism that would adequately protect the upland habitat identified.
So what you're saying to me is there is a fundamental difference of opinion between the Natural Resources Committee and the Planning Commission?
The Planning Commission believed that they protected a vast majority of the upland habitat and that it was good enough.
Okay, thank you. That's good enough for me. So I, is there a motion?
Mr. Mayor, may I ask Ms. Turway a question?
Sure.
Laura, so this is, this is my fear, and I hate to have this on the record, but what we have had happen before in the community is that somebody finds out about this, and then next thing we know, we drive down there and somebody's clear-cut the entire property. That has happened, as you are very well aware. So that's my, that's my concern.
The way our code is set up, we do not have a citywide tree ordinance that's in place that regulates tree cutting on private property.
I'm not even talking about citywide tree ordinance. I'm just talking about trying to do the right thing by our goal five resources, and this is the process that that should have been identified, and I'm not sure why it wasn't. I don't have any problem with the rest of the plan. It's a great job. I participated myself. It's been a lengthy process. I have appreciated the process because that's what it took to get to where we are today.
It's clear that this was discussed ad nauseam between the Planning Commission, the planning staff, Natural Resources Committee, back and forth several times. And the fact that the end, the fact of the matter is, at the end of the day, the property owner right now could treat those trees as lumber and log it and be done with it. And there's nothing in our ordinances that would stop them from doing that. This is the same situation that happened up in Park Place, except that the land that we were, that Mr. Guy was complaining about wasn't inside the city limits. But either, in fact, I, I don't know, is it, has this land been annexed yet? I know.
Eric Properties, the sections for three and four happening.
They have, okay. So they're inside the city limits. We don't have any code. At this late date, I, it seems like staff has been over backwards to try to get to a place to get this done, and they've gotten to as good as it can get. And there's an old saying, don't let perfect be the enemy of the good. And so I think we're at that spot.
Make a comment and then question.
Please.
I understand Commissioner McGriff's concerns, and so if there was any way for the staff to consider after this is moved on about the overlay district, I don't know that it has to happen right now. I do agree that I don't think our tree protections actually will save an upland habitat area. But I would entertain the conversation at a later date, but I don't want to hold up this, this thing tonight. My question, the only question at this late hour that I'm willing to bring up is about the, there was an exhibit about the parks and the tentative cost for the, for the parks of 24 million, and it says that they're not currently incorporated in the SDC charges, and there's a future date. So my question is, is are we going to be able to include these, this in the Parks Capital Improvement Project list so that they can be incorporated in SDCs prior to big development happening and us missing that boat of collecting clearly the SDC funds that we need?
Well, the, I'm going to answer the, what I know, and I know Dawn's on the line, and I might transfer it over, but the goal on my end for planning is to make sure we have what we need to move forward, the ability that when a development application comes in, we have the things in place, and if we need one more step to get there through a CIP project, CIP list, but to make sure that we can coordinate with developers if there's opportunity to use economies of scale and use SDC credits for abutting street improvements. That may be in front of the park. That's a great cost savings for the public to do that at the time of development, even if it might be quite a while before the park gets actually built or developed using SDC credits. So we need to get what's in place, and having even a preliminary budget is an important first step. And so on the planning end, we wanted to put that in the code. I'll pass it over to Dawn on the parks end, what they will do with this information and how they'll move forward to make sure we can be in a place to provide SDC credits if development comes in.
Quickly, Ms. Robertson?
Or Dawn, I could take this one real quick. You know, so one of the goals of the Commission that we've identified for the two-year budget is to update the Parks and Rec Master Plan that includes the CIP list and do a rate study for SDCs because it hasn't been done. So this would be incorporated into that. So right now, if someone were to come in tomorrow, we're not in a good spot. So that when we get the new Parks and Rec Director hired, you know, this is one of the goals that we've put on hold while we have the interim Parks Director in place. So we realize that we are behind on, you know, it's one thing to update the CIP, that we can do that. It's another thing to update the system development charge to accurately reflect everything that's in your CIP.
Right. So what you have in the packet today is kind of moving the ball forward as far as we can.
Thank you.
I'd like to make a motion.
Go ahead.
I'd like to move the first reading of Ordinance Number 21006, Thimble Creek Concept Plan, Beaver Creek Road Concept Plan Code and Zoning Amendments Legislative File 19-00003.
I'll second.
Moving second. Further discussion?
Just to make sure that Commissioner Lausmann's comment to planning is noted.
Call roll. Oh, oh, sorry. Mr. Kabaisman?
Ordinance Number 20-1006, an ordinance of the City of Oregon City, amending the Oregon City Municipal Code Title 16, Land Divisions Title 17, zoning Chapter 17.06.020, official zoning map, the official comprehensive plan map, and amending ancillary documents of the comprehensive plan to implement the Beaver Creek Road Concept Plan.
Commissioner Frank O'Donnell?
No, I'm going to follow Commissioner McGriff's lead on this and vote aye.
Commissioner Rocky Smith?
Aye.
Commissioner Denise McGriff?
I'm going to change my vote from abstain to aye.
Commissioner Rachel Lausmann?
Aye.
Mayor Dan Holliday?
Aye. Moving on, anybody want to pull anything from the consent agenda?
I just have a question for Mr. Lewis.
Go ahead.
Mr. Lewis, on item 20-216, does this, I looked at the information, does this also include our fabulous flower baskets?
So this is a landscape item? No, it doesn't, but we've, we're moving forward with the landscape baskets.
Okay.
All right, is there a motion for consent agenda?
I'd like to move the consent agenda.
I'll second.
Moving second. Call roll.
Commissioner Frank O'Donnell?
Aye.
Commissioner Rocky Smith?
Aye.
Commissioner Denise McGriff?
Aye, and thank you to staff for 2253.
Commissioner Rachel Lausmann?
Aye.
And Mayor Dan Holliday?
Aye, and we're going to adjourn to the second session.
Thank you, Laura.
We're going to do it.